Okay, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman, Eric Gasperini votes yes, Phil Crossman.
Yeah.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
Minutes, approve the minutes from the May nineteenth twenty twenty meeting, so moved.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman, Eric Gasperini votes yes, Phil Crossman.
Yeah.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
And the May twenty-six twenty twenty budget meeting, I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman, Eric Gasperini votes yes, Phil Crossman.
Yeah.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
They approve and sign treasurer's warrant number fifty, so moved.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman, Eric Gasperini votes yes, Phil Crossman.
Yeah.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
Okay, committee and department reports and appointments, road commissioners report.
So is there any update on the backhoe?
Uh, update on the backhoe, so the, at this point, we don't know exactly what's wrong with it, Jake looked at it and gave a couple of ideas, but he thought it might be. Um, so now it's just a matter of whether we have him do the work on it, um, or send it to CAT, um, you know. They think it could be an injector, um, I don't, I don't know exactly how involved that is, or, um, it's still just, that's the thought that they, that's what it could be.
Other questions on the report? Um, any, any questions, comments?
I have none.
All right, let's go on to engineers' report.
So the, uh, big, I guess, updates with this are the RFPs that are out for the garage, Public Works Garage and the bridge. In the interest of getting, um, multiple competitive bids, um, we extended the deadlines for both projects. Um, the feedback the engineers were getting, um, was that a couple of the bidders really wanted to submit, but they just needed another couple of weeks on the garage. Um, the bridge, um, was being presented, uh, the feedback has been that it was too small, um, or too big for the small companies and too small for the big companies. Um, but there, there was some interest from some of the bigger companies that if they, if they were to win the bid for the garage, they then might be willing to bid on the bridge. And so separated those due dates in, put a couple of weeks in between the garage and the bridge. Um, you know, should that be the case, so at this point, um, there's a, um, a good chance that there's a fourth bidder now for the garage. Um, and that bidder has just today asked for an additional week. Um, that the bids for the garage be pushed one more week to the twenty-sixth, um, and I said I'd bring that to the board. Um, you know, for you guys to give feedback on that, if that was something you were okay with, um, I did ask the engineers, you know, why the. This is kind of typical to see these things pushed back, and he says, you know, just kind of chalked it up to the, the climate right now and just how things are. Um, now there's a lot more legwork and trying to figure out the island logistics and getting work done out here. Um, you know, they felt good about the possibility of four bidders, um, you know, the more, the more bidders that are likely to submit, presumably the better. Um, chance will have at competitive bids, um, and good prices, so I'm not sure if there'd be a consensus to allow that to happen.
So, has, has anyone actually submitted a bid?
No, because they're not due now until next week.
Right, but, you know. I don't know if it seems fair to extend the bids when we already have other companies that can seem to be able to make the deadline.
Yeah, I mean, all you can say is that there's no guarantee that there'll be all four, that there will be four, and. Um, there's no guarantee that the three that have expressed interest will all, all still be interested. Um, the engineers don't seem to think that the three that are interested now wouldn't be. Um, but if there's a good chance that that fourth bid might come in or more, um, they feel strongly that it, you know, they, you should consider it.
We can legally keep on extending the bid date, bid closing date?
Yeah, you mean, you just put an addendum out there and let all potential bidders know that, um, engineering company's been doing that. They've issued two or three addendums with different information, only one extension, but different information that's been gleaned from, uh, the pre-bid meeting, um, and then questions that have been received in between.
I'm, I'm fine, I guess I'm fine then with extending it one more week, but, you know, I hope that's the last time, I mean, enough is enough here.
Can we just extend it to July first and, or June thirtieth, and that's it, I mean, call it good?
What's the, what's the, what's the next date, Andy, again?
Um, it'd be Friday, June twenty-sixth would be the, the now proposed deadline for the garage.
What day is June thirtieth? June thirtieth is a Tuesday, presume maybe we could maybe meet that thirtieth. The thirtieth seems like a pretty good day to me.
And why wouldn't we just leave it to twenty-sixth?
I forgot about the one week till the next bid, so probably we should leave it at the twenty-sixth.
Okay, whatever, it's fine, yeah, if we just need to, we just need to extend it one more time, then.
Yeah, no, that's, I'm fine with that, and that's it, see, if you don't have it done by then, that's the way it is.
Yeah. Sit down and do your homework, people. All right, so yeah, let's move it to the twenty-sixth, you don't need a formal motion for that, do you?
Um.
General consensus, we did.
There's a consensus to that.
Yeah.
Um. Donald's not able to hear any of us at the moment, but I'm not sure if I can troubleshoot that with him. All right, um. Other things that they got, you see on the left-hand side of the screen there, the other things that they were, uh, working on, the, the. Uh, grant application did go to Northern Borders, uh, out on time, um, that was the, I think we asked for nine hundred ninety-nine thousand. Nine hundred ninety-nine dollars for that one, um, the, so I haven't heard back for the MPI with the DOT yet. Um, but with those two applications out, that leaves the EDA, um, grant application, which is on a rolling basis, and so, um, Brent. Uh, Mick Ed and Gabe have all been working to, um, pull that application together, um, for the Main Street project, um, with those three. Um, you know, if we're able to get awards from those three grants, that would put us in really good position with what we have. Um, available, um, so we'll see how that goes. Any other questions with the engineer stuff?
Fine. Um, new business, a proven sign annual town election warrant for July fourteenth twenty twenty. I move we approve the warrant.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman, Eric Gasperini votes yes.
Yeah.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Donald Poole, can he hear us yet?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, proven sign liquor license renewal application for Lindsay Davis doing business as Sandbar, so moved.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman, Eric Gasperini votes yes, Phil Crossman.
Yeah.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Donald Poole.
Yes.
Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Okay. And annual town meeting warrant draft and consider date and location for meeting.
Were, uh, the draft I sent you, there were a couple, um, just changes that we made with the numbers that didn't, um, you know, line up as I had in the spreadsheet here, so we did make some of those corrections and, and grammar. Uh, corrections as well, uh, so these are the, kind of where the numbers fall out with the, um, with the articles that you have. So I just tried to put it all on one screen so you could see it, um, the column for the total amount for each department by article, and then where the funds would come from to offset those expenses. Um, big part, I guess the big piece still for this is, you know, are these. Numbers, I mean, these should reflect what your votes were for in the, what the budget process yielded. Um, but then the other, the net, big next step is how, how and when do we want to do the annual town meeting?
Yeah.
So the, the governor, um, did clarify, I think we've probably given the update, and if not, um, the clarification being that. Um, the town meetings can occur, um, with the social distancing required, up to fifty people. Um, so some towns know they don't have a problem with that because they don't get fifty people. Um, some have come, trying to come up with ways to accommodate if more than fifty people show up. Um, I think one was going to use one of, a facility, the firehouse in their town, and leave the doors open, and if actually, if more than fifty came, that they'd start putting them in the parking lot. Um, others have done outside drive-in style town meetings, some are putting them on the ballot, which is another option the governor gave. Um, the only part that wasn't clear to me was, you know, we've got more articles than just what you see. Here, that the other ones include things that the town gives a select authority to do. Um, and I got to clarify, um, whether it's just the expenditure articles, or if it's all articles that we generally. Um, review, could be done by ballot, um, then that also creates a. Say a challenge or an opportunity for, to figure out how we work that into the July fourteenth election. Um, so I'm not quite sure if you wanted to discuss what your thoughts were, vision was for having that.
Well. How many people, including selectmen and town officials, were at last year's town meeting?
Just over fifty last year for first time in a while.
Yeah. I mean. You know, I feel comfortable then with the idea that we have, you know, we, if we can have a town meeting in person, do it that way. You know, the auditorium can fit quite a few people.
I have to check with the school, I think their policy right now is that they don't have the school available for any activities.
Oh, that's going to make it difficult.
So that would almost, um, make us shift and look to outdoor venues, I don't know. If we really have any other indoor venues that would, could accommodate up to fifty people with six-foot distancing.
I don't think so.
Um.
The school, the school wouldn't make an exception for this one thing. Aren't they, aren't they doing graduation with families only in the auditorium, like next week or something?
I'd have to ask, I said, I don't, I don't know if they'd consider it or not, but I'd have to ask them.
I, that does, please ask them, because.
Yeah.
That's really the only place we can do it.
Right, so maybe until we know that, we can't really make a decision.
Um, I wonder if, uh, the only, uh, they've just used the back entrance. Not have people come all the way through the school. To the auditorium.
There'd definitely be some ways to minimize, like you're saying, minimize where people go.
Yeah, all right, so yeah, check in with the school, and we'll check, we'll bring this up again. Seems like the best thing to do to me.
Okay, are there any, anything that pops out that you want to go back over, or anything that jumps out that didn't look right, um, from what we talked about last time?
I found something in Article ten, the two just don't, the two numbers don't add to the total, is that something that's going to be corrected before it goes out?
It'll be corrected before it goes out, but it doesn't add, let's see.
So like the, the total is a hundred forty-one K, twenty-one hundred is coming from the fund balance, and another hundred thirty-five K is coming from taxation, so. And then, and then, the rest is from revenue, it's just, I don't know if we have to say that specifically, but.
I think the version that I've got on the screen right now, I think that was one of the ones that, um, was picked up and corrected.
Okay.
Yeah. We did catch that.
Fifty-three. Yeah. Yeah, that adds up.
On Article twelve, you spelled insurance without an N.
Fix that, too. All right, so I'll, I'll reach out to the school before, um, declaring, is there a tentative, you know. Date, I was thinking we wouldn't be able to have it before July fifteenth, um, only because we've got to get, wrap up, you know, once we get this finalized. Uh, and then published, you know, we have to publish the, um, town report, and that usually takes upwards of three weeks to turn around. Um, and we got to have it out at least three days before the town meeting, so I think July fifteenth would be the earliest we could have it. Um, I don't know if you just want to see what dates may or may not be available, it might depend on if we kind of can't use the school, um.
Well.
Look for a certain week.
If people have to come out on the fourteenth to vote, the fifteenth might be a little early anyway, to ask them to come back out again.
Just for my schedule, that, that would, I, I would prefer if we did it the next week, just, I'm going to be right in the middle of. My company's quarter close, which would make it difficult for me to. Sign off and be at the town meeting, on the fifteenth at least.
All right, so maybe the twenty-second?
That would work better for me.
That'd be the next Wednesday?
Yeah, I, I mean, I prefer to do it sooner rather than later, but I just, it'd be difficult for me to make that on the fifteen.
At this point in time, we've screwed the pooch as far as sooner rather than later, so.
True.
The twenty-second seems like a pretty reasonable date.
Well, I agree with you, Eric, people aren't going to come out and vote, and then the next day go to town meeting, so.
I'm worried about how many go up in general.
Yeah.
All right, let's go with the twenty-second of July, intentively.
All right.
Make that work.
See what we can find out.
Yeah, and, you know, if worse comes to worse, they can vote by ballot, I guess. You know, but you'll need, you'll need to find out from the school pretty quickly, you know, what their policy is going to be. Hopefully they have a quick response time.
If we were going to do it outside, we, could we do it at the school out on the field? I know it's hard to plan that, not knowing what the weather's going to be, but.
I can ask about that, it's a possibility, I mean, it's nice that the parking is all there, um. You know, the other thought would be the parking lot downtown.
Yeah.
Where the bandstand.
Right. Well, anyway, let's see if the twenty-second works.
Yeah.
See if we can, you know, even have the event, either inside or anywhere on the school grounds. All right, what's next? Report from town manager.
Um, so we did just talk about the town meeting, um, continue to encourage people to vote, uh, by absentee ballot for the July election. Um, we'll continue to put out more information about that, and we've already had a couple of wind ads about it, uh, the state, I know, is encouraging people to vote, um, absentee. Um, it just cuts down on the number of people coming in and out of the building, we're going to have to modify, and we're working on. Getting the equipment and things we need, uh, you know, make sure people are as safe as we can make it. Um, you know, a lot of facilities, um, as we're talking to other towns, and looking to modify things or have, you know, more than one entrance and exit that they can use and have a kind of, uh. A through traffic pattern, if you will, for voting, you know, we don't have that luxury, so we're only going to be able to take in a certain number of people at a time. Um, you know, it may be slow at times, waiting for people to come in, go out clean, but, you know, disinfect behind them. Um, you know, so, you know, for those reasons, for those that can, we encourage them to vote, um, with absentee ballots. Uh, mentioned the backhoe, um, just a matter of looking at the budget, you know, we're going to have to make a, a decision here. Look at numbers through this week with this week's warrant, um, so I'll touch base with Dan and, and see which way we want to go with that. Um, they have been doing some ditching in the, you know, downtown or on the, on the ball ground, we knocked the shoulder down there, um, they did some work on High Street. Um, and Luke's been working up on Tiptoe Mountain Road, which I haven't gone to see yet, but. So hopefully there's some significant, you know, good improvements on those sections that have been giving us trouble.
I went up, I took a ride up there last weekend, a lot of work has been done.
Good. Um, the fire trucks were getting pump tests, um, I'm going to try and do it tomorrow, there's been nothing huge, but a lot of small issues with the, with almost all the trucks. There's been at least something, um, so they're working, uh, companies, the guys working through those, um, repairs now. Last I heard, they were trying to get a throttle cable to come up from Brunswick today, and, and sounds like. Uh, with Kevin's help at PIA, they've found a way to try and make that work, so, big thanks to him. Um, the billing raise for EMS, I think we mentioned before, um, Medicare modified the, the rate schedule. Um, that's something that I'll have a proposal for at the next meeting to consider. Um, with the changes they, they, they approved, um, the ferry service also had gone up for its night, mid, emergency trip runs. So just a couple of things we need to update on that, and reflect the new rates. Concerns, uh, with the EMS crews, and just general concerns as summer, um, comes, it's always challenging in the summer to get. Um, everyone's attention, um, as things get a lot busier, so we're just need to look at some options, uh, with summer crew levels. Um, see if we can get some of our volunteers to be more available, or find other ways to make sure that there's coverage. Just don't want there to be an issue. As far as I know, things at the transfer station are still going okay, um, there was been discussion, um, or questions with. Um, I know with Bill Alcorn about the elder care bottle redemption, um, it had been open for a few hours one day and asked that it be closed again. Um, so it was just, that was something that, um, like the swap shop, it just causes another, one more place for people to gather and, you know, slow things down a little bit. Um, it's not always just as simple as putting stuff in one spot and walking away. Um, so that was one of the concerns we had, I had early on, was making sure that, um, we're able to keep the staff as safe as possible and not. Encourage or allow for, for people to, um, stay too long up there. Um, so that was, was one more thing that I thought was going to create that, it's right next to the recycling center. Um, so, you know, we're going to have to, we'd have to, you know, try to minimize how many people are in there at one time, and again, slowing it down, so that was a decision I made. If the board feels otherwise, we'll try and find ways to make, accommodate it. Um. But I'm a little concerned with, if increased, um, with increased customers, that, you know, we need to be mindful of that.
Can they not move that down where the, uh, the, um, down below where the composting was?
I think there's still some stuff set up there for the, from composting.
Yeah. I mean, that would be out of the way, nobody. If they could put it down in there.
Right. Yeah, I think they, they considered all that, um, as far as I know, the exactics and the air ducts are still down there.
Can they put it in front of the swap shop while that's closed?
Possibility.
It's still going to be a clog my, clog mire up there with.
Mm-hmm.
Say, keep it in that area, people are just.
I know one thing that, uh, we're just brainstorming, you know, if, if things need to, um, become a little more linear, if you will. Um, you know, looking at having people going in, in and out fashion, and so possibly having people, you know, for example, enter. Like where the recyclable containers are, um, where the gate is there, the lower gate, um, you know, and drive around the building potentially, and, and then come up. You could have a few cars queued, if you will, in that area, um, it's just a thought that we had had, um, nothing that be thrown out there can, or put in place at this point, but just. You know, I think we do have some options, although limited, um, to help, you know, keep things moving as best we can. I think generally the guys think it's working out okay, um, I just want to. Make sure we're doing what we can to keep them, keep them safe and others that are up there.
Yeah, I feel like it's pretty safe right now anyway, I mean. At least whenever I'm up there, you don't see too many, you don't see clusters of people necessarily. You may, might be close to each other for a minute while, if they're throwing in the garbage at the same time, but it's certainly not for, for a sustained period of time. Pretty quick. People wearing masks.
Well, and that, so you have it, you got, people got to wear their masks. Regardless.
The, um, library, as far as I know, I've checked in a few times, uh, Scott and Linda, both times I've called. Um, and it sounds like things are going pretty well, a little slow to start, um, but it sounds like people this week are starting to, um, pick up and, and call and make some requests now, so. Um, it sounds like that's going well, they are alternating their hours, so it's just, um, Linda or Scott in there at once, um. Let's just see how that continues to go, um, but with, with that, they're open a little bit more, a little more available that way by, by doing, by doing that, uh, schedule. Um, the county commissioner's still, I don't believe it was on the June agenda for them, um, but the police contract still, um, needs to be taken up on their end. Um, so just letting you know, I haven't heard anything back on the proposed changes we had, um, at least not from the commissioners, so I had to talk to the sheriff about it a little bit. So just waiting to hear more on that. Uh, the ferry project with the dolphin extension, there is still some concern, uh, it sounds like there's, I think, at least one, if not two moorings had been moved or shifted. Um, that are likely to accommodate the bigger boat, um, with the, and the pen extension, but there's at least two more that need to be. Um, possibly moved altogether, um, and that might not just be, you know, shifting it a few feet. And it's, I know Jim's tried to, um, talk to and communicate with those two mooring owners and has not had much success. Um, and so I was waiting to hear back from the ferry service, um, as to working together on, trying to understand what that looks like, where they, because the problem we have is. If they can't keep the moorings and just shift them a few feet, there really is no other place that Jim feels they can go to put another boat somewhere in Carver's Harbor, and if, especially two. Um, you know, so it does create a problem, you know, for, for those boat owners or mooring owners to then, where, where, you know, where is it they're expected to be and still have a mooring? Um, so I just need to follow up with the ferry service on that to see what's expected, it's a project that, that's going on with them, and their. Drawings early on didn't suggest that it would be a problem until things got started, and things were realized that, in fact, it might actually be a problem, so. Need some help from them on that. Uh, banking service, Camden National Bank is inquiring if we want to enter into this ICS, um, sweep fund. So we have a sweep account now that, at the end of the day, basically the money, you know, essentially gets invested, um, there's a, there's a, a different type of sweep setup. Um, there's a little explanation in here, um, so they're asking if, if that's what we wanted to do. Um, they had attached, uh, things like the state statutes that allow for it. Um, I don't think it's a huge difference, it just sounded like it had a slightly better, although small, uh, yield on, um, that investment overnight, if you will. Um, so I don't know if, if Donald or if others are familiar with that, if that's something that we wanted to sign over and do with the funds, um, through Camden.
Are there any additional fees if we enter into that?
Not that they told me, shouldn't be.
I mean, if there's no additional fees or higher fees, then.
Returns, I mean, seems like a no-brainer, but I'd have to look into a little bit more to give you a more detailed answer.
I can send you all the, um, couple PDFs they sent me, so you can see what the, with more detail what it was.
Yeah, why not, I'll take a look.
Yeah.
Um, we did interview, we, uh, Gabe and Linnell and I, um, interviewed, uh, three fellows, um, candidates. Um, and we did have unanimous, unanimous decision after interviewing those three, um, and it was offered to one of them. Um, so just highlighting some of the, some of the things that were in the draft work plan for that position. Um, again, a lot of it was, you know, picking up stuff that we had talked about, the GIS database needing that to be updated. And then working with staff and committee members to do training and integrate, you know, some of the departments, I mean, I think it'd be great to be able to get some of the. You know, public works infrastructure and a GIS platform, and Dan's been talking about wanting to do that for a couple of years now. Um, along with the code, code stuff, and we know the assessing records need to be updated. To assist with, uh, just community development projects, looking at the downtown and outreach stuff, working with, um, Gabe on that. The strategic plan and. The strategic plan and, and following through with that, um, they can help, help, uh, continue that. There were other things in the work plan that we'd identified as well. Um, it was just a few of the bigger ones that I thought I'd highlight. Um, the, the summer letter, uh, if you will, as we talked about at our last week's meeting last Thursday. Um, I know there's some, um, feedback back and forth between the public health team and Phil's, um, draft edits there. I didn't see much today. I don't know if you've all had a chance to see, um, the updated version. So is that, were there thoughts on that? I mean, I have some feedback from the public health team. Um, you know, if that was, if that'd be, I mean, I'd like to offer that, uh, but didn't know if there were other thoughts and reactions to what was sent out earlier today.
I read, I read the letter that was sent today and I was, it was, it was good to me.
Yeah, the, the letter Phil sent, you mean? Yeah, it looked, it looked good to me too.
So the, um, I mean, the updates that I think that were in there were just two bullet points, um, reflecting the, the orders that, or the plan that came out yesterday from the governor. Um, the concerns from the health team that, um, accompanied the first version on Friday, um, still stand. Um, with just the language in that paragraph that talks about, um, you know, just welcoming everyone. Um, you know, it's not that they're not welcome, uh, but the, it doesn't necessarily reflect the conflict that the public health team presented or that, the concerns that the health team presented from their perspective. Um, in that the other, um, hopefully constructive feedback was that the bullet points that are in, um, the drafted version, um, be removed, um, in, in, and because they'll be included in the supplemental, you know, there's a, a larger or longer, um, not complicated, but just a longer, more detailed guidance document that would accompany that. Um, of which some, some of those bullets would have been in. Um, so it was just for the sake of having it be a letter, and a supplemental piece, uh, for guidelines. Um, that was the recommendation, um, from the health team, but they were conflicted with, um, the statement in that, uh, letter about welcome. Um, it didn't seem to reflect what they were calling hearing on Thursday.
Yeah, I feel like we decided to not include, your phrase that said, you know, we welcome you back, per se, was just, so just remove that clause. And if the supplemental page is going to have those bullet points, then I think we could remove those as well. I don't want to rip apart Phil's letter, but, that would just be my suggestion.
I agree with that.
But right now it says, we now feel that if you're willing to join us in those, measures, that is, uh, protective measures, uh, that we welcome you back to the island. We know you love as much as we do. You propose to eliminate that line.
That's just a part of about the welcoming you. Yeah.
I mean, it's just needed, the, the, as they said, the team saw it, the need to strike that balance between the difficult decision that it is, you know? Um, but just, you know, to emphasize more on if you return, here's what we do expect, you know, from, from those that return as well as our local, community. Um, they just, for some reason, you know, they did feel that that was a, a different tone because the, the concern and risk still stands there in terms of welcoming any and all back. Um, I just wanted, you know, they wanted us to kind of have that out there. It's not that they don't want to see people succeed and businesses thrive, but, um, that's what, that's the concern that was raised.
Well, I'm not troubled by it, the way it reads. And if we, if we wanted to strike that welcome, what would be substituted? Right now it says, while the virus has not changed, we have made many changes in our ways of doing things to minimize our risk. And now feel that if you're willing to join us in those measures, we can welcome you back. What might we say otherwise?
I think that was the point of sending along the, um, the version that I had shared from the team after you had sent, the edits, you know, the, the thought, the understanding was that there, there would kind of be a, 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 a back and forth still after Thursday. Um, so that they, they provided what their feedback was based on what you had shared. Uh, it didn't seem to be, I don't know if I, if I had seen too many, um, reactions that suggested that that was okay either.
You know, I think, I think the welcome is important because the thing that prompted this revision in the first place was the economic dependency that so many local businesses feel. And they have expressed some desperation at the likelihood of not seeing any uptick in the business that they're presently doing and the difficulty that that would leave them in. And I think that, welcome, welcoming them back while expressing caution as carefully as we did is a good thing to do.
Well, so why don't we, so while the virus has not changed, we have made many changes in our ways of doing things to minimize our risk of exposure, period. Let us be clear about our expectations for those of you who will be returning to the island and for those who live here full time.
I was just gonna suggest the exact same thing, Eric. And then just cut out completely the, um, uh, the, and now feel that if you are willing to join us, that, let those last couple of lines there. Jump right into let us be clear.
So would you read that again, uh, Eric?
Um, let's see here, um. Okay, right after while the virus has not changed, we have made many changes in our ways of doing things to minimize our risk of exposure. Period. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a complete sentence. Yes. And then go right to the next paragraph. I thought I made a sentence fragment, but, yeah, while the virus has not changed, we have made many changes in our ways of doing things, minimize our risk of exposure. Yeah, period. After.
Right. If you want, I can pull up, um, the health team's version. Not to complicate things, but if, if you wanted to see it.
I don't know. I feel like if we stop, if we just eliminate that welcome part, you know, that should be sufficient. I mean, I understand the importance of opinion from the public health team, but at the same time, you know, we can back and forth this. And there'll be a September letter before we know it.
Right.
You know?
How does everybody else feel about that? Jake, Tom?
As long as the,
Go ahead, Jake.
Uh, as long as the public health team is good with it, I'm good with it. I don't want to step on their toes. I'm not getting up at midnight to go deal with, you know, any of these people that might become sick. So I, I don't want, I don't want to, you know, make Mark or Carrie or anyone. Nah, Jen, you know, feel uncomfortable. That's my position.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, it's, 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 we're in a difficult spot. I understand we need to, we need, we need the tourism we get for our local businesses, but we don't, we don't want to, we don't want to risk exposure for the rest of us. We're gonna be here after the summer ends. Or even for the people who come here to visit and we don't want them getting sick and going back and spreading it in their communities.
Andy, you can put that other letter up if you would. Thank you.
You mean the one from the team?
Yeah.
I think it starts out very similar. Um, that third paragraph, um, actually captures some, some of the bullet points, but in more of a paragraph form. Um, you know, stuck to what Jen had kind of highlighted is some of the limitations which have been, you know, echoed in the other letters. Um, captures the, the paragraph that Phil talks about, but the, the changes and the ability to minimize the risk to exposure. Um, and that the businesses have made modifications and do have ways to, um, you know, provide services to people that come. That deeply appreciating the summer residents who have been waiting patiently, um, you know, whether you're here now or have decided to come from away. Um, thought the must come, we ask you to join us and follow in the community guidelines we've included here. So that's where, um, some of those bullet points I'd mentioned, um, just making it as a clear resource page for people to see what the guidelines as of today anyways are. And it talks about the safety protocols, the quarantine, um, piece with yesterday's update. Just a few more things that we just got to, um, finalize, but that was the, you know, kind of that difference between, just pulling out those guidelines that look like you wanted to include in the letter, just having it as a supplemental piece.
Well, I think it's, I think this is night, uh, maybe not welcoming, but it certainly is not, uh, insulting in any way, but we deeply appreciate summer residents who have been waiting. Um, sorry, we pulled it up a little bit, yeah. Patiently. Oh, no, I can't see it. Oh. Can you pull it up? Um, scroll down a little bit. Uh, we deeply, we deeply appreciate summer residents who have been waiting patiently at our request to return to your island homes and we applaud the safe actions of everyone on islands. So to me, that's, I mean, that whole paragraph is, to me, we could include that.
Well, the last paragraph of the, of the one of the draft that you have essentially says the same thing. Says the select board and the published team applaud, applaud these actions and wishes each of you the best of this very different island summer. And I think we should remind ourselves that having told people that they were not to come initially, a lot of them are now waiting to know that in fact they can. And, and they, a- and the business community is eager that they get that message so that they can keep their head above water.
A lot of the, uh, all those bullets, uh, gonna be included in the letter, Andy? All the updates and all that along with,
Yeah, the supplemental, if you will, the guidelines, um, is something that we wanted to add as like its own resource page, if you will.
Right. Um, I think that's a good, very important thing to add to the letter. Absolutely.
Yeah, the supplemental.
Yeah, I agree.
So Phil, how about you just, on Phil's letter, have we just strike what we said we would strike the couple clauses with the welcome in it? Remove the bullet points and it'll make the letter brief, which is fine, and include a supplement. And let's get this out. I mean, I think we could talk about this forever.
Yeah.
You know, eventually we just have to send a letter. If we're going.
Alright, yeah, let's do that.
Does anyone else have anything else? Any other concerns about that?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, so remove that welcome part and the bullet points and, then, um, here, as far as signing it, um, I don't know, I mean, they, they,
What if, uh, what if the public health team still isn't fine with that letter? Are we just gonna send it anyway?
Well, I feel like Phil's letter, you know, with, with the edits we've just made, you know, pretty closely mirror the public health team's, letter that Andy just shared with us.
Exactly.
I mean, you know, I think they worded differently, but yeah, it's the same message.
Yes, I, I just want to make sure that they're on board with it before we sign it. Um, I'm a, that they'll probably read it by tomorrow. And if there's any big objections, I'll let us know.
Yeah, I mean, that was the big one.
I would like to see them on board too, and I hope that they can be brought on board tomorrow and we can get this thing out.
So do you all want to sign or do you want to be, one of you sign it on behalf of the board? Just make that simple.
You mean literally sign it?
Yeah, or not.
Yeah, I would just, just type in, you know, the board of selection and the public health team.
Yeah, we'd have to actually sign it.
Give our names if you, if, if you want.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Right.
Just have everybody's name on there.
Right.
You don't have to sign.
Um, other than that, you know, do, are clarifying and we have been receiving calls based on yesterday's keep main healthy plan. Um, I know the medical center has already received a lot of phone calls about, um, testing, possibility of getting a test when people get here. Um, so they are working through that and coming up with, um, kind of their, ability and their position to be able to do that. Doesn't, you know, there are testing sites on the state website. I think, uh, Penn Bay is the closest one. Um, that would be able to do the testing at the levels that the keep main healthy plan highlights that. Otherwise, a lot of the smaller facilities still need to do them based on, um, you know, people that present with symptoms or those that are in the, you know, hi- hierarchy, but the protocols that were there before. Um, that not every facility is in the state is set up to be able to do the testing for absolutely any and all. So we do need to, we're all working with them to kind of see where that balance is and what can be offered in the supplemental.
I had somebody ask a question about, um, after they, you know, for, for homeowners, seasonal homeowners. They get their test, it's negative, hopefully. What do they do with the test? Nothing? Just keep it? Or, I mean, how? It's, so if you're renting, the people that are renting are supposed to give the, test results to the, uh, the landlord, correct?
Right. Yeah, we talked about it yesterday and, you know, we, we in theory could, um, if people wanted to provide them, um, somewhere, you know, we could, um, here, collect those if people wanted to share them. Um, we are all also looking at, you know, a way for us to do it digitally. So there was no paper need. Um, you know, with an hour and a half boat ride, you certainly would have the opportunity to fill it out. Um, you know, again, one of those, I don't know if they could be available on the bows or the terminals, um, you know, but even looking at a digital version of it. Um, you know, that we could create.
So in, in other words, they would be almost like they would be, um, registering their test results with the town, correct? Other, um, EMS or, like a registry of type of sorts?
Of sorts. Yeah, I mean, that, that plan doesn't, I mean, a plan is definitely geared to, um, geared towards the, um, visitor, you know, the weekend, you know, less the seasonal resident. And so that, that's where, you know, for those in that category, you know, we, you know, finding ways to offer that. Um, you know, if people wanted to supply, you know, submit that, submit it, but provide that with us. We can collect that.
Hey, reporting members.
Um, I have one thing about the Brownshead Lighthouse. Uh, some people had expressed concern about the condition of the lighthouse. I mentioned it to Andy and he forwarded us, uh, information from the lighthouse association saying that they were coming out this fall, having, had their trip in the spring cut short, but since then, people have cautioned that they were supposed to come out in two thousand sixteen, again in two thousand eighteen. And they wonder if there's any reason to be confident they'll come out this time and do the work that needs to be done.
Sorry, was there, um, I missed the, was there a question?
Yeah, the question is, uh, is there any reason to be confident that they'll come out this time and do the work that needs to be done? And if, if you're unsure yourself, then can we get some assurance that, that this time they really will come and really do the work?
Um, sure, happy to follow up with Bob. He did send and I forwarded to all the board, uh, two emails that he sent over the weekend. Um, one of which included a link to a GoFundMe page and listed the, um, improvements that need to be done. I think it was sixty thousand dollars worth of improvements right now that they're looking at. Um, so I mean, you referenced some of the points that he had there. He must have seen that. So beyond that explanation, um, I'm not sure. Um, I can call and talk to him. Um, but I guess what, what would, you know, the assurance, like, I guess other than his word in an email saying that that's what they'll do.
Well, I would, i- if it were me, I would call and say, look, uh, Bob, you promised for six years in a row to come out here and do this work and you haven't yet. And a lot of the townspeople who care about this historic landmark are concerned about whether this work will ever happen. So, what can you do to give us, uh, more confidence than we've had, reasonable even in the past?
I'll follow up with them on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think people would hesitate to, um, want to give to a GoFundMe if, if they haven't. if they haven't shown that they have got, have wanted to come out in the past and haven't shown up. So I mean, I think a GoFundMe would be good, but we need the assurance that they're gonna be out here to do the work.
And I'm a little surprised that the Lighthouse Foundation has to rely on GoFundMe for, I wonder if they on GoFundMe for each project in each municipality.
Yeah, I agree, Phil. But anyway.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, I move with you, Jen.
Second.
I can do it by Phil Crossman. Uh, Eric Gasper, any votes yes? Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Pam Alley?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
All right, everyone. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you, everybody.